This meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. I would like now to read the usual public notice. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board’s policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board’s regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may speak. Written communications to the Board are routinely distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law, and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university’s rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry. Thank you very much. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon’s meeting of the Board live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream, providing service worldwide via personal computers and mobile devices. The public session of this Board meeting will also be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can be accessed via the CUNY website. Please join me in welcoming Kingsborough Community College President Farley Herzic, Hostos Community College interim president David Gomez, and interim Vice Chancellor Judy Bergtrong, as well as Graduate School and University Center President Chase Robinson, and Queens College President Felix Matos Rodriguez. I would like to acknowledge the presence in the first row of the audience of Eddie Bayardell, who is serving as administrator in charge at Bronx Community College, now Dr. Carol Barat Joseph, has become a university professor. Interim President Eduardo Martí will start at Bronx Community College on October 4th. Double congratulations to trustee Carol Robles-Roman, who was recognized by Smart CEO and Wizermazer’s LLP as a BRAVA 2014 winner on September 9th, and who will be honored by the National Conference of Puerto Rican Women Incorporated New York Chapter at their 2014 annual scholarship gala on October 4th. Congratulations are also in order for trustee and USS chairperson Mohammed Arshad on his selection as a “rising star” by the publication City and State for its 7th Annual Upcoming Forty Under Forty issue. The Board held its Manhattan Borough hearing on Monday, September 22nd. Thirty-nine individuals appeared to testify at this hearing. Trustee Frida Foster chaired the hearing, which was also attended by trustees Rita DiMartino, Terrence Martel, and Mohammed Arshad, members of the Chancellery and the Manhattan College Presidents or their representatives. A summary of those proceedings has been circulated to the trustees and to the chancellor’s cabinet, and transcripts are available in the office of the secretary. As I reported in July, Board Vice Chair Phil Berry will chair the search committee to find a new president of Hostos Community College. Vice Chair Berry did this once before at Hostos with great success. Members of that committee will include trustees Rita DiMartino, Ugo Morales, Valerie Beal, and Frida Foster. Chancellor Miliken, in his report, will outline the appropriate follow-up and involvement of constituency representatives. Earlier this month, I shared with my fellow trustees a report that I wrote entitled “Governance for a New Era: A Blueprint for Higher Education Trustees.” I would like to thank the many CUNY members of the CUNY community who shared with me their comments on this report. Although the report is more generally applicable to other colleges and universities, as well as CUNY, I greatly appreciate your interest and your help.
Where’s the contract? What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now!
I need to warn you that if you continue to disrupt this meeting, I will ask the security staff to escort you away from the meeting.
Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now!
Please be warned, I will ask you to leave in a moment.
Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Contract! When do we want it? Now! No contracts! No peace! 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 No contracts! No peace!
Although you will hear more about this in the chancellor’s report, I want to commend Chancellor James Miliken for visiting all 24 CUNY campuses this summer and meeting large numbers of faculty, staff, students, alumni, and civic leaders in a most impressive effort to communicate with the vital constituencies of the university. JB, you must let us in on the source of your battery power. In any event, congratulations to you on an important listening tour that we look forward to hearing from you about shortly. On behalf of the Board, I want to extend our deepest condolences to the family of Paul Mazursky, who died on June 31st, 2014. He attended Brooklyn College, taking a month off during his senior year to make his film debut in Stanley Kubrick’s first feature. He graduated with a bachelor’s degree in 1951. Mr. Mazursky was an innovative director and screenwriter who both satirized and sympathized with America’s panorama of social upheavals in the late 1960s and 70s in his films. He will be missed. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eight additional CUNY faculty have received Fulbright grants since our last report at the June 2014 Board Meeting. They are Valerie Solomon of Bronx Community College, Martha Nadel and Toby Stein of Brooklyn College, Kathy Noakes of Hunter College, Cecilia Savaltia of LaGuardia Community College, Edwin J. Kinley of Lehman College, and Vadim Moldanov and Linda S. Perry of York College. Congratulations to all. Hunter College distinguished professor Tom Slay, co-director of the Creative Writing MFA program, has won Poetry Magazine’s 2014 Editor’s Prize for Feature Article for his essay, “To Be Incarnational.” Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on trustee Carol Robles-Roman to announce student and alumni honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three additional CUNY students have received Fulbright study grants since our last report at our June Board Meeting. They are Jesse Chaffey of City College, Erica Rose Thomas, and Medina Wahup of Hunter College. Congratulations to you all. Queensborough Community College Spring 2014 graduate Yun Jun Shin was awarded an NYC DEP internship in the summer of 2013, as well as a very competitive REU internship at Hope College in Michigan in the summer of 2014. She has presented her research and internship findings at conferences including Columbia, Yale, and St. John’s Universities, as well as the City College of New York. Congratulations. Hunter College MFA candidate Alex Ramirez-Malis won a 2015 Princess Grace Foundation Award for Graduate Film Scholarship. Congratulations. Baruch College student Marcus Cooper placed third in the 12th Annual Smart Pitch Challenge for the development of a mobile app that produces class schedules and makes course recommendations. Congratulations. Seven students across CUNY received American Association of University Women fellowships and grants. They are Anastasia Korolkova of Macaulay Honors College at Baruch College, Johanna Osorio of Brooklyn College, Jane McAllevi, Megi Gosishivili, and Akami Nishida of the Graduate Center, and Mei Mi Diyap, and Nichari Riley of Hunter College. Congratulations to you all. The following students have received prestigious scholarships and fellowships. Jolene Guravich of Macaulay Honors College at Baruch College won a Venture for America Fellowship. Katie Etdanda of City College won a Thomas Pickram Graduate Foreign Affairs Fellowship. Andrew Corey Green and Brian Patrick Jones of the Graduate Center have won Ford Foundation Pre-Doceral Fellowships. And Hunter Gross of Macaulay Honors College at Hunter College won an NSCP David Boren Undergraduate Scholarship. Congratulations to all of our fine students. Ten students from across CUNY have received Women’s Forum of New York Education Fund fellowships. They are Emil Unturweger of the Borough of Manhattan Community College, Kathleen Daniel, Jeanette Hawkins, and Rita Rivera of City College, Carolina Rodriguez of Hunter College, Simone Isaac of John Jay College, Lisandra De Fraga, and Christina Mihelsku of LaGuardia Community College, and Kyoko Hairston and Sayada Kayir of Lehman College. Congratulations to these fine students.
You have on the table and in your trustee meeting books a list of all grants and gifts received by the university since our June 30, 2014, meeting. May I now call on Chancellor JB Miliken to present his report on recent activities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this working loudly enough for all of you? As the chairman mentioned, I spent my last few months touring all 24 campuses with my wife, Naina, over two months. I recommend it, although maybe at a more leisurely pace. Enjoyed the visits immensely, met hundreds of students, faculty, and staff, and we had some very helpful discussions. I continue to be greatly impressed by the quality of our faculty and the students at all of our colleges, and I want to thank them because we were so warmly received. I’m going to say a few more words about this later, but it was impossible in the visits in July and August to miss the obvious commitment of our faculty to CUNY’s mission. I was moved by both the enthusiasm of the faculty and the drive and ambition of their students. These visits have been an important part of my education at CUNY, as well as my visits with state and city leaders and members of this Board, and these last few months have helped me to understand more deeply the state of CUNY today, its aspirations and potential, as well as how it’s regarded by others. So I’ll have more to say about this later in the fall, and will have a good deal to do with informing my thinking about the next round of strategic planning at CUNY. The bottom line for me is that despite many significant challenges, I think CUNY is very well-positioned today, and it has tremendous potential for the future to even better serve our students and the people of New York. I’m going to say a few words about our impressive fall enrollment numbers, but I want to use this opportunity to frame a broader issue. I feel strongly that success in public higher education is determined mainly by three things: broad, affordable access, high-quality academic programs, and student success. Without meeting our goals in each of these areas, we can’t be successful. And if we reach our potential and pursue these goals, I have no doubt that we will be considered among the most important public institutions in the world. We have some important developments to report regarding access. First, demonstrated by all-time record enrollments this fall. CUNY’s fall enrollment exceeds 274,000 students at our 24 campuses, the highest ever. This represents a 1.5% increase over last year. The freshman class is expected to number nearly 38,000, another record, an increase of 6% over last year. New transfer students, 8.5% higher than last year. New graduate students expected to increase by close to 8% as well. And also importantly, the number of applicants to CUNY, with academic averages of 85 or greater, increased by 4.2% to a new record this year of 22,700. Closely related, there are some great developments with regard to affordability at CUNY as well. More than 11,000 of our newly enrolled freshmen will be recipients of the prestigious New York City Council Merit Scholarship. I want to offer thanks to trustee Arshad and his student colleagues for successfully advocating on behalf of this. And thanks to Speaker Mark Viverito and Higher Education Chair Barron and other members of the council for their support of this important program. By the way, tomorrow, the City Council’s Higher Education Committee will convene a hearing on the important subject of the costs of college textbooks, at which CUNY representatives will provide testimony on a number of innovative programs underway at CUNY. Also tomorrow, the U.S. Department of Education Undersecretary Ted Mitchell will be at CUNY for a roundtable discussion on innovation in higher education with CUNY leaders. The discussion will be hosted by LaGuardia Community College President Gail Mello. A number of presidents, deans, and other senior leadership will join me to participate in the discussion with Undersecretary Mitchell. Also, on the issue of affordability and access, some exciting news on our work with a new national foundation, The Dream U.S., founded by Don Graham. The Dream U.S. provides private support for undocumented students in those states such as New York that charge them resident tuition. Last year, three of our community colleges participated. I began talking with Don before I arrived in June about expanding the program to all of CUNY. Now, thanks to excellent work by senior university dean John Mogalescu, Vice Chancellor Sanchez and their staffs, our college leadership, and Candy Marshall, the president of The Dream U.S., these scholarships will be available for all CUNY undergraduate programs. This is a major development, and our students should benefit significantly. The Dream U.S. agreed to extend the application period to accommodate CUNY students, and our goal is to have more than five times the number of applications and awardees that we had this year. I’m going to shift to the second of the goals I mentioned before, and that is providing high-quality academic programs and instruction. Again, I can’t say enough about how I’m impressed I’ve been as I’ve learned more about CUNY programs and met with more of our faculty over the last four months. One piece of evidence that you’ve seen about the quality at CUNY, if you ride the subway or read the papers, is the record number of faculty and student Fulbrights who’ve won highly competitive slots to study and work abroad. So it seems fitting, after watching the Jay-Z concert in Central Park Saturday night, that I mentioned one nice result of Jay-Z or Sean Carter’s interest in the success of students such as those at CUNY. I attended an annual dinner the other evening for IIE, the Institute for International Education, the organization that runs the nation’s Fulbright and Gilman and other State Department education programs. Featured that evening were three students who won the brand-new Sean Carter-Gilman scholarships. Two of the three were from CUNY. So with regard to academic programs generally, one point seems self-evident to me. The quality of any university is dependent upon the quality of its faculty. Fortunately, as you know well, CUNY has many outstanding faculty. To maintain and increase the quality of our programs, the education our students receive, and the research conducted at CUNY, we need to work hard to be competitive for the best faculty. We need to be able to attract and retain outstanding faculty. This is, of course, a point made by the PSC this evening, and I think it’s one with which we all agree. There’s no question that our faculty and staff are entitled to raises, and that this is a high priority for the City University of New York. And that is a priority which we will continue to work in consultation with leadership in the city and the state. Access and quality are fundamental, but if our students don’t succeed, that is, if they don’t persist, if they don’t graduate, then we can’t say that we’ve been successful. We have much work to do on this front, but we’ve also accomplished much which we can be proud of and build on. First, I want to congratulate Scott Evanbeck. Is he here? Still recuperating. And everyone associated with the creation, launch, and execution of the Stell and Charles Gutman Community College. Last month, the first class graduated in numbers that offer great promise. Gutman’s graduation rate was 28%, four times the national average for urban community colleges. 90% of its students will be attending four-year institutions this fall. I also want to thank Mayor de Blasio for his support of our community colleges and his administration’s significant investment in ASAP, a remarkably successful nationally-recognized program to increase student success. I had the opportunity to thank the mayor personally this weekend and understand that his continued commitment to CUNY is impressive. Finally, on the subject of affordable access, quality, and student success, all wrapped together, few things could better capture all three than the recognition in the New Washington Monthly’s rankings of the best values in American higher education. Brooklyn College, Queens College, and Baruch College were numbers 1, 2, and 3 in the Washington Monthly’s national rankings. I know we’ve placed a few ads on this, and that Karen, Thelo, and Mitch are now television stars, but I think we need to take a moment to recognize this extraordinary accomplishment today. It is a remarkable achievement, and congratulations. Next year, we’re vying for the top four slots. I want to mention progress on a couple of important state and CUNY initiatives. I am committed to the idea of the university as a key element, perhaps the key element, in building and sustaining a strong regional innovation economy. Where the best jobs require higher education, and those regions that have leveraged the strength of their colleges and universities are seeing great benefit, the partnership between the university and state and the private sector is essential. In that context, I want to mention Governor Cuomo’s initiative, Startup New York, and how much this can mean to our campuses and the surrounding communities. Project is already attracting high-tech businesses to the state by creating 50 tax-free zones. Will be coordinated in New York City by five CUNY campuses. Just this last week, The New York Times reported that Onforce Solar, a solar energy company working with BCC, intends to build a technology hub in the Bronx. The project is currently waiting approval. The governor’s $55 million investment in CUNY through the New York CUNY 2020 Challenge Grant Program to incentivize long-term economic development implementation plans will include eight innovative projects at 20 CUNY campuses. These initiatives are great examples of how the university can be an incubator for economic growth, for the state, and I want to thank the governor for his support. In addition to the search that the chairman mentioned, we have launched a search for the executive vice chancellor and university provost that had their first meeting last week. President Lisa Koiko is chairing the search committee. Trustees Valerie Beal and Barry Schwartz are also serving on the committee, as well as trustee Terrence Martel in his role as president of the Faculty Senate. There are a number of university provosts and distinguished professors on this committee, and I look forward to an excellent pool of candidates and finalists for the position. I want to thank them for that. In August, I attended the University Student Senate Leadership Conference in Calicoon, New York, joined by Vice Chair Berry, who did his usual crowd-pleasing workshop on leadership and success, and by trustees Robles-Roman and Foster, who led a popular workshop on student engagement. Senior Vice Chancellor Hirschenson, who cannot stay away from a good party, was also there, as were Vice Chancellor Sapienza and Vice Chancellor Sanchez. I want to say, as you would expect, my colleagues and I were very impressed by the student representatives at this conference. The questions were excellent, the discussion was serious and productive, and they were a pleasure to be with. I’ve been very favorably impressed by CUNY students at every turn. Even when they have urged this Board to make significant changes in policy that they feel very strongly about, such as the issue of divestiture of investments from fossil fuels, they have done so with constructive arguments and diplomacy, and it has been a pleasure to meet with them. Naina and I have been delighted with the responses to events we’ve been hosting for faculty and students at the chancellor’s residence, and look forward to more of these events, and hope many of you can attend. We will be hosting new presidents’ receptions on their campuses in October for Farley Herzic at Kingsborough Community College, for Chase Robinson at the Graduate Center, which will be preceded by the convocation and installation, and for President Felix Matos Rodriguez at Queens College. I hope many of the members of the Board will be able to attend these celebrations. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will conclude my report. I’d be happy to take any questions, and I will be happy to continue to try to reduce the length of the report.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments on the chancellor’s report? I’d like to make a brief comment. I think there is perhaps no more powerful evidence of the growing academic reputation of CUNY than the fact that we have so many more students, 75,000 more students than we had in the year 2000, and, in addition to the higher numbers, an improvement in their academic qualifications. That is the best sign I can imagine of the growing recognition of the work that we are all doing, and our faculty, staff, and students all around, all through our campuses, are doing to improve the quality of the university. And it is very, very gratifying to those of us—I know many of you at the table were with me in 2000 as we began this work. It’s worth noting that we’ve had a similar increase in the numbers of full-time faculty. And while it’s harder to measure the qualities there— And while it's harder to measure the qualities there because they don't come in with averages and test scores and so on, I think it's fair to say that the quality of the faculty, the newly hired faculty at CUNY, is probably as high or higher than it has ever been. So the truth is, we've done a great deal for which we can be proud since the year 2000. We focus on our challenges most of the time in this room, but we should take satisfaction from our long-term success. We've got a long way to go, as you said, I think particularly on student success rates. But I'm very proud of the work that we've accomplished here since I joined this board 15 years ago, and I just wanted to note that I think we should all take satisfaction in this very strong evidence of our institution's progress. Are there any other comments? Thank you, chancellor, for that excellent report. We'll turn now to the policy items on the calendar which require a vote. I would like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for September 29, 2014. There's a copy of this report on the table. May I have a second? Are there any questions for the chancellor on the university report? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? The university report is adopted. Next, I would like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and the executive session of June 30, 2014. The draft minutes are in your meeting books. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any, is there any discussion or calls for revision of the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The minutes are adopted. We'll turn now to the report of our various committees. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. May I call on trustee Peter Pantaleo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs and the Subcommittee on Investments met in a joint session on September 8, 2014. After approval of the minutes of the June 2, 2014 Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting, the committee approved the following resolution. It's listed as calendar item 3A. The American Bar Association recently approved the establishment of a part-time program in the study of law leading to a Juris Doctor degree at the CUNY Law School. Calendar item 3A is a resolution that adopts the following tuition schedule for this program: full-time resident students, $7,050 per semester; part-time resident students, $4,840 per semester; per-credit resident students, $595 per credit; full-time non-residence students, $11,710 per semester; part-time non-residence students, $8,050 per semester; per-credit non-residence students, $975 per credit. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3A.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee?
Comment. I think that this is, we really don't realize how important and how significant this is when we think about the inception of the law school and for us to now be at a point where we are organizing a part-time JD program. It's really a tremendous boost to public law, and it's a great opportunity. We're being very opportunistic in launching this at this particular time. The New York Law Journal has commented upon how worthy this particular progress is, so I just want us to not, there are a number of programs that we always develop, but this is a hallmark occasion.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Other comments or questions on the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the following two resolutions for the New York City NYC Justice Court procurements came to the attention of the committee after the committee meeting of September 8, and given the essential nature of its content, we bring them forward for consideration by the board. The first resolution is a request that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorize the General Counsel to execute three contracts on behalf of John Jay College of Criminal Justice to provide services for the NYC Justice Corps. These contracts are renewals of contracts previously authorized by the board in calendar item 3A on April 30, 2012. The renewal term shall be one year, and the contract shall include a one-year option for the university to renew in its best interest. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $6,412,500, $3,206,250 during fiscal year ending June 30, 2015, and a like amount during the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. Using funds allocated by the City of New York to CUNY and payable by the Research Foundation, the contract shall be subject to the approval as to form by the university's Office of the General Counsel. The second resolution is a request that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of John Jay College of Criminal Justice to purchase services for the NYC Justice Corps from the Center for Alternative Sentencing and Employment Services without competitive bidding pursuant to law and university regulations. The term shall be one year and shall include a one-year option for the university to renew in its best interest. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $2,197,500, $1,128,750 during fiscal year ending June 30, 2015, and $1,068,750 during fiscal year ending June 30, 2016, and payable by the Research Foundation. The contract shall be subject to approval as to form by the university Office of General Counsel. John Jay College of Criminal Justice will use these services for the continued operation and implementation of the NYC Justice Corps in targeted New York City communities with high rates of poverty and young adult involvement in the criminal justice system. The NYC Justice Corps is a collaborative initiative that the City University of New York is engaging in with the New York City Center for Economic Opportunity as a demonstration project to reduce poverty and reduce recidivism among youth ages 18 to 24 by setting them on the path toward higher levels of education, dignified work, and meaningful participation in civic life. The initiative also seeks to enhance the capacity of New York City neighborhoods most affected by justice system involvement to support the successful reentry and reintegration of their own young people into the life of the community and the labor market of New York City. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of both NYC Justice Corps procurement resolutions.
Thank you. I'd like to second the motion on this very valuable set of programs. Are there questions for the committee or for President Travis on either of these motions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? The motions are adopted. President Travis, may I make a personal suggestion that you discuss with the dean of the law school? The law school's possible involvement? Perhaps it already is involved.
Following the approval of action item 3A, Vice Chancellor Sapienza gave a report on the FY 2015 city budget and its impact on CUNY finances, and also described the FY 2015 initial budget allocations that were issued to the colleges this past summer. Following this report, the Subcommittee on Investments was convened, and after approval of the minutes of the meeting of the Subcommittee of June 2, 2014, the meeting was adjourned to go into executive session. Two information items were presented to the Subcommittee. The first was a portfolio review given by CUNY's Chief Investment Officer, Janet Krone, and Cambridge Associates. And the second was a presentation on the active-passive fee analysis by Ms. Krone. The Subcommittee then returned to public session where an informational presentation was given by Vice Chancellor Sapienza and Cambridge Associates on the request from a student group called CUNY Divest, which is calling for the divestment of fossil fuels from the university's investment pool. With no more items on the agenda, the meeting was adjourned. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on Committee Chair Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will now present for the board's approval the items that the Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered at its meeting on September 8. I will begin with items 4A and 4B, which constitute notice to the Board of Proposed Amendments to Sections 6.1 and 9.1F, respectively, of the bylaws. The first would establish a new title series to be used in the medical degree program at the City College of New York. The second would clarify the composition of personnel and budget committees at Hunter College Elementary School and Hunter College High School. Only notice of these proposed bylaw amendments is being provided at this time, thus no action is required today. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration will consider these items when they are formally presented at our next meeting and I report to the board further in November. Item 4C amends the governance plan of the City College of New York to allow all tenured faculty members and all lecturers holding a Certificate of Continuous Employment, or CCE, in a department to vote on the reappointment of lecturers applying for CCE status in that department. The amendment has been adopted by the college's Faculty Senate and is recommended by the president. The Board Committee of Faculty, Staff, and Administration also recommends its approval. Mr. Chair, I present item 4C for the board's consideration.
I'll second that item. Are there questions on this City College governance matter? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? 4C is adopted.
Thank you. Item 4D amends the governance plan of the Graduate School and the University Center to remove the requirements that the Chair of the Executive Committee of the Graduate Council be elected by preferential voting. This amendment reflects changes that have already been made to the Graduate Center bylaws. It has been approved by the Graduate Council and is recommended by the president. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration recommends its adoption. Mr. Chair, I present item 4D for your approval.
And I'll second that motion. Are there questions for the committee on the Graduate School item? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That is adopted.
Calendar items 4E through 4G are three naming opportunities at Baruch College, which I will present as a group. These namings, which reflect monetary gifts of nearly $3.5 million, are as follows: the Sarah Kahn-Wazerman Jewish Studies Center, the Municipal Credit Union Classroom, and the Ernestine Wilstein Class of 53 Classroom. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed these matters and is pleased to recommend their approval.
I will second those three naming opportunities. Are there questions for the committee? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those three matters are adopted.
Finally, Mr. Chair, I would like to give a brief status report on the work of the CUNY Defined Contribution Investment Oversight Task Force. As you may recall, in January, the board adopted an investment policy statement for universities' optional retirement program and tax-deferred annuity plan. A task force consisting of members of the university's Finance, Legal, and Human Resources Group and the Faculty Senate was created to begin implementation of that policy. I am pleased to report that we have engaged an excellent consultant, CalMac Retirement Group, which has done extensive work with a number of universities around the country. They will be looking at the myriad investment opportunities that CUNY offers to see if they are consistent with current best practices in the market and also reviewing the associated fees. I had previously reported that we hope to complete our review this fall and make recommendations to the board in early 2015. But due to the very large number of investment plans and products that must be considered, we believe a thorough review and analysis will probably take a year or more. Therefore, going forward, I will provide quarterly reports to the board on the progress of the task force. We continue to be excited about bringing better retirement products and additional education about investing wisely to university employees to ensure that they can retire with an adequate portfolio of investments. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
I would just like to add, in case there were trustees who were present, as I was, at the initial discussion of this matter, I think some of us were concerned that our oversight on this matter was lacking, and that we were not carrying out our responsibility for oversight in the interests of our employees. I was very relieved to hear the excellent consultant that we retained say that they thought, no, that our existing plan was a completely adequate and responsible level of oversight on behalf of our employees. So we're not in the position that we have a broken plan that we have to fix, you know, absolutely as soon as possible. We have a plan that is working actually quite responsibly and quite, quite well. That was news to me, and I just wanted to share that. Are there any questions for the committee on this matter? All right. Anything further?
No, that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Trustee, I'll call on Committee Chair Frida Foster to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered two items at its meeting of September 8, 2014. These action items are listed in this board meeting as calendar items 5A through B. 5A: The City University of New York Construction Management Build Services Requirements Contracts to request the City University Construction Fund to execute approximately eight requirements contracts to be used on an as-needed basis, providing construction management build services for medium-sized construction projects through the CUNY system. These projects are anticipated to be in the $3 million to $30 million range. Each contract will have a not-to-exceed amount of $50 million for a three-year term with a three-year renewal clause. Projects under these contracts will be managed by CUNY, and contracts will be held by the fund. The Office of Facilities Planning, Construction, and Management has issued a new request for qualifications for the eight requirement contracts to replace those currently in use which are expiring. Projects under these contracts will be overseen by CUNY. 5B: The City University of New York Increased Funding for Construction Management Build Services Requirements Contracts and College Laboratory Facilities Construction Management Design Build Services Requirements Contracts to request the City University Construction Fund to amend the following three Construction Management Build Services Requirements Contracts with the fund by increasing the total not-to-exceed amount of each from $30 million to $50 million: Lyro Program and Construction Management, RC Dulner Construction, and Triton Construction. Also, to request the fund amend the following College Laboratory Facilities Construction Management Design Build Services Requirements Contract with the fund by increasing the total not-to-exceed amount of the contract from $36.3 million to $60 million with Epic Management. The Board of Trustees passed a resolution on January 25, 2010, to request the fund to execute four CM build requirements contracts and four CM design build requirements contracts to be used on an as-needed task order basis to provide design services and/or manage the construction of college laboratory facilities and other renovation projects, with each contract having a total not-to-exceed amount of $30 million. By resolution on February 25, 2013, the Board of Trustees requested the fund to amend its CM design build requirements contract with Epic Management by increasing the total not-to-exceed amount from $30 million to $36.3 million to ensure sufficient funding for assigned task order work. The resolution herein will request the fund to increase the total not-to-exceed amount of its three CM build requirement contracts with Lyro Program and Construction Management, RC Dulner Construction, and Triton Construction from $30 million to $50 million. RC Dolner Construction, and Triton Construction from $30 million to $50 million, and to further increase the total not-to-exceed amount of its CM design build requirements contract with Epic Management from $36.3 million to $60 million to ensure sufficient funding for the completion of assigned and pending vital task order projects. I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
I'd like to second the motion on these two motions. We've had these requirements contracts come before us several times, and we've always understood how useful they are. Are there any questions on this latest group of them?
Mr. Chair, I have two quick questions. The amounts referred to in 5A of $3 to $30 million, are those the project amounts or the project management fee amounts?
I'll take that. Project amounts.
Project amounts. And do our project managers, are they paid or reimbursed on the basis of a percentage of the total project, or is there a fixed fee? And if so, what is the fixed fee percentage?
I'll have to get back to you.
It's a fixed fee, is it not?
Yes.
So it probably varies with the project.
A fixed dollar fee or a fixed percentage?
Rather than a percentage.
That's the part you negotiate with him.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Charlie, any other questions?
No.
Any other questions? All right. If you're ready to vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those two motions carry. Anything further to report from the committee? Trustee Foster?
No.
Thank you. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. May I call on Committee Chair Carol Robles-Román?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs has one item for the board's approval and one information item. The committee met on September 8, 2014, and approved calendar item 6A: Approval of the Amendments to the Bylaws of the College Associations and Auxiliary Enterprise Corporations. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the amendments to the bylaws of CUNY college associations and auxiliary enterprise corporations as needed to comply with or take advantage of the New York State Not-for-Profit Ratalization Act of 2013. An explanation for the amendment is included in the calendar. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6A. I ask, Mr. Chairman, for a vote on this calendar item.
I'll second the item. Are there questions for the committee on 6A? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, we have one calendar item, 6B: Notice of Proposed Bylaw Amendment. Notice is hereby served of a proposed amendment to the bylaws of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York relating to students. An explanation for the notice is included in the calendar. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6B and my report for the committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finally, I have a non-action item to be provided for informational purposes only. This is notice of actions taken by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee on July 22, September 8, and September 23, all 2014, of a total of eight items recommended by the chancellor. The executive committee unanimously determined that it would be detrimental to the university to delay the advancement of these matters. The items that the committee took are listed as items 7A through 7H on page 18 of your calendars, and this is notice of the adoption of those items by the executive committee on those three occasions. That concludes the business of this meeting, which I now declare adjourned.